Good evening. I'd like to call the City of West Bend Licensing Board for Monday, December 17, 2018, to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any other microphones on? I'm hearing a little feedback. No? Got it? Any heavy breathing, it's coming from Rogers' end of the table. Item number one tonight is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Licensing Board on December 3, 2018.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item number two is approval of the operator's license, and the list was in our packet.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Be no further business before the Licensing Board. I adjourn.
Good evening. I'd like to call the Finance Committee for December 17 to order. We have six items on the agenda. Item number one is the minutes of the December 3 meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign. That motion carries. Item number two is a resolution to accept donations to the Parks, Recreation, and Forestry Department. Presentation by Craig. Good evening, Craig.
Good evening. We have three donations this month. The first one is $1,000 donated by Roots and Branches, which will be put towards park amenities. The next one is $7,500 donated by Horicon Bank, which is for the July 4 fireworks display. And we had $150 donated by the West Bend Disc Golf Club, which will be used for the Disc Golf course at Riverside Park. So thank you very much to those organizations.
I agree. Thank you very much to those organizations. I'll take the motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign. That motion carries. Item number three is a resolution authorizing the appropriation of funds for the DNR Emerald Ash Borer Grant. Ken, Craig.
Earlier this spring, we had received the $25,000 from the Wisconsin DNR towards our EAB program, which went for tree plantings. And so it's been sitting in a revenue account. Now we're asking it transferred to an expenditure account, so we can use that to be spent.
Thanks, Craig.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Craig?
Just have one clarification, Craig, and just for the public's knowledge that now that we're four, five, six years in the EAB program, we're starting to get some questions on how many trees we cut down. I try to give some guidance that I believe we generally cut the trees in the warm months of the year, and we come back to stump grind and restore areas in the fall and winter months. Could you just touch on that, so if folks out there have some questions as to why some stumps may be sticking up in the air? That, you know, we understand that, I think.
Sure. Yeah, so go back to this earlier winter of 2018. We went through and knocked down almost 1,000 trees on the streets, which we have been doing about a 600 a year clip. So we decided, let's get them all done, because as you see, they're dead, and they start, limbs start coming off, and potential to fall on vehicles or people. So we knocked them all down this winter. But the stumps obviously stayed, because we can only, we do 400 to 600, maybe a little more than 600 a year. So what we've been telling people is 2020, we'll have them all stumped out and all fixed up. We are going to try and ramp it up a little faster, if possible, because we realize it's not pretty sitting there. It's not a safety hazard, like a standing dead tree would be. But the stumps are there, and you want to, we want to plant grass, and you can hopefully plant some new trees there, et cetera. So we are looking at trying to get most of them, I won't guarantee it, but most of them done in 2019. And usually, this will probably happen over a three-season period. So spring will knock out some, summer, and then fall as well. So by October, we should have most of them done.
Are the trees that are, were in the right of ways, are those done and gone?
Yes.
And how many, how many that total?
Yeah, it was 3,700 or so.
Okay.
So it's a substantial undertaking, but our staff did a great job with that. And then this money that we talked about is actually for replanting of trees. So we got a large request from residents. We gave them a flyer, hey, now that your tree's done and your stump is gone, you can apply for our free street tree program. We'll also plant some, when we have construction projects like 8th Avenue, we'll come back and do some tree plantings, and some go into the parks as well.
And then last thing, through education from your staff over the last few years, we've learned that ash tree isn't necessarily like a dead oak tree that can stand for 10 or 15 years and be just fine. Ash trees have a tendency to just break off, I think, right? So the goal of getting them down on the ground really is a safety issue. So we appreciate folks having a bit of patience. I feel very confident that West Bend's ahead of the curve in many similar communities in addressing this issue. So thanks to you guys.
Well, thank you. Mike actually speaks on behalf of the DNR at some of the seminars, and West Bend is definitely a leader in this in the state. You'll see it over the next five, 10, 15 years in other communities, that they'll still be working on this.
Thanks. I have a motion and a second on this. Any other comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign. That motion carries. Item number four is a resolution authorizing the appropriation of funds for park bench replacement. Once again, Craig.
Yeah, so another transfer, again, from a revenue to an expenditure account, so we can spend it. But this was actually, right along the Eisenbaum Trail, with the new building going up, one of the contractors actually smoked out one of our benches, and they graciously agreed to pay for it. So we have their money, and didn't have to go through insurance or anything. So we're just having an account, and now we need to transfer it, so we can purchase it.
Perfect. Thanks.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on this. Any other comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign. That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Craig. Item number five is the approval of the 2019 budgets for TID number 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, and 13. Good evening, Mark.
Good evening. I won't go through every, any one of them in particular. Just to let you know, we followed your parameters from the last few years. Debt on levy was limited to only three TIDs this year, and it's consistent with what was passed in the general budget. Those TIDs are TIDs 5, 7, and 13, so we're doing a little bit better. We've managed to also propose no borrowing in 2019, and no additional advances from the utilities within these budgets. We, in fact, are repaying, are proposing to repay debt to sewer of about $115,000. So we're working that down as well. We're using excess increment from the donor districts, TID 4 and 6, to eliminate that debt on levy for TID 9, and to reduce it for TID 5. So that was also per your directions. We are maximizing the existing funds for previously approved projects, or costs in the two remaining active TIDs, which is TID 9 and TID 12. TID 9, the money is being reserved for environmental closure costs, and also the Riverwalk projects. And then the TID 12 is, again, environmental closure, and the future utility and site redevelopment costs. So we can start out on the TID 12 project without an initial borrowing. So if you have any questions on the specifics, I gave you the executive summary on the spreadsheet, and each individual TID, as long as, as well as the TID met location maps. Hopefully, that was enough information for you.
Yeah, it worked for me. I appreciate all the information that you sent. I appreciate you taking the time to go through that, and I think we're in a pretty good spot on some of those. So thanks for your hard work on that.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion on this.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions on the TID budgets? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign. That motion carries. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
And finally, item number six is the 2019 through 2021 collective bargaining agreement between the City of West Bend and the International Association of Firefighters Labor Agreement Contract. So this contract came at the, I would say roughly, what, two months of discussion between the city and the fire department. All good, positive conversations. There were some things in there that are positive, and I think are going to help us out. So you've got the contract in front of you. If you have, we'll answer any questions that you guys have. Oh, I'm sorry. Michelle, hi, Michelle.
No, it's fine. You're good. We met like four times over the last few months, yes.
Exactly. So if they have any questions for any one of us that's on the negotiating team, or... If not, I will entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the collective bargaining agreement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign. That motion carries. Thanks, Michelle. And Mayor, I think you wanted to say some things after that.
Yeah, maybe I'll just wait until we officially approve it at the council level, so that it's 100% approved. And we've got an agreement with the fire department union that we won't negotiate or make public the negotiations until it's actually been approved. So we'll hold on about three minutes. We'll talk about it officially at that point.
Be no further business before the Finance Committee. I adjourn.
Thanks, Rich. I'd like to call the City of West Bend Common Council for Monday, December 17, 2018, to order, and recognize that we do have all eight council members here this evening. Good evening, gentlemen. Item number one is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting from December 3, 2018.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions, comments, or corrections? Hear none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Items 2 through 6 are on the consent agenda.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions or comments on these? Hear none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item number seven, discussion on amending Section 9.07 and creating Section 9.075 and 12.175 of the Municipal Code Regarding Keeping of Chickens in the City. The topic that was in front of us maybe a year ago, maybe a little more than a year. We have three new aldermen, and one of the aldermen asked to bring this back for discussion again, and possible decision tonight. Ian, could you just run us through the way the ordinance stood? I think that's what's in our packet, the way the ordinance stood last time we discussed this. And then I think we can open it up for folks on the council that love chickens, folks on the council that might not love chickens, and folks on the council that might love chickens if something was changed in the ordinance. So take it away.
So the ordinance in front of you is what was proposed at the last time this came up. I don't think there has been any substantial work done to it since then, just because there wasn't a whole lot of support for the proposed ordinance at that time. The first part of the ordinance is just changing the provisions of what types of animals are allowed in the city. So there's currently provisions that prohibit the keeping of fowl. This would add an exception for the proposed chicken ordinance. It would keep the rest of it the same. So geese, ducks, turkeys, pheasants, et cetera, would still be prohibited. The actual keeping of the chickens, we would require anyone who wants to keep chickens to register them with the name and address of the owner, the number of chickens, and there would be a license fee. All chicken coops has to be, have to be kept in the yard, and have to be, sorry, have to be contained, kept in a clean sanitary condition, free from objectionable odor or vermin. That's language that's kind of been cribbed from other ordinances that sets a standard but doesn't set overly onerous provisions about how the actual chicken coops are designed. The provisions allow, regarding the chicken coops, there'd be a limit of four chickens. None of the chickens could be roosters. Nobody can slaughter the chickens in the city. We're limiting the use, or the chickens to properties which are either single-family dwellings or duplexes. So no apartment buildings with like four units or eight units, whatever, would have chicken coops. They have to be kept in a waterproof, rodent-proof, predator-proof coop, and they are considered accessory structures, which would mean that certain zoning requirements apply to them. In addition, we have specific provisions for them, that they have to be in the rear yard with a minimum setback of five feet from the lot line, and they can't be placed within 25 feet of any separate residence, which would be located in an adjacent yard. So if your backyard is 10 feet from your neighbor's house, you wouldn't be able to have one. And then the last one is just the, the last part of it's just setting the fee for the chickens. Again, this is kind of a working draft. That was a proposal, so we had something to work off of. And it was kind of a, what I cribbed from a whole bunch of different chicken ordinances throughout the state.
Thank you, Ian. Roger?
I make a motion that we leave things just the way they were and don't allow chickens anywhere in the City of West Bend.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion on the item.
As Ian said, it's a working draft, and I'd like to work out the license fee. Instead of $8 per chicken, I was thinking something like a fat, a flat charge per year, so maybe something like $50. And that wouldn't be limited to having four chickens. That would be, if you want one chicken, it's still going to be a $50 flat fee. So I was hoping we could discuss some amending of that.
I don't think that's germane to my subject, my motion.
Ian, what's the protocol here? And I, Andrew, I appreciate the comment, and I think we'll have other comments. If there are five aldermen that are dead set against chickens, my guess would be that no amount of amending is going to take care of that?
Yeah, but, like, while emotion's pending is the time to discuss, and I do think it's pertinent, because the, whether the ordinance is acceptable to alderpersons, either as written or amended, would be germane to whether they're going to vote for or against Alderman Kist's motion.
So flat fee, that'd be on an annual basis? Is that what you're thinking? Okay? Any other comments? Yes, Justice?
I think, I know I'm bringing this up again, and I think it's consistent with the way people are going now with raising, raising and growing their own food. I think we also suggested maybe giving it like a year period, trial period. We might build that into it as well, in case we have, you know, big problem with it, which in, in most cases, you can do the research. We're not going to get a whole lot of people doing this anyways, but so I don't think it's going to be a big problem a year from now. But if it is, we could unwind it a little easier if we did that. And also, there's a couple of folks in the audience that want to talk, I think, too. Is that, is that a possibility?
Not a public hearing, but we're always pretty open. If someone from the public, when we're done talking here, would like to come up to the mic. We won't, we won't close the discussion period until everyone's had a chance to speak.
Awesome. Thank you.
Chris?
Sure. So as no surprise, I was in favor two years ago. I'm still in favor now. To me, I don't know if just a libertarian inside of me, but I think it comes down to basic property rights, and you have the rights to do whatever you want on your own property. I think we've set good limitations here. If we need to set a couple more, I'm fine with that. And I know when we were doing the research a couple of years ago, I looked at so many municipalities who were doing this, much larger than ours, and there really wasn't any, any issues going on. I don't know why West Bend would be any different. So I'm definitely in favor of this. Thanks.
Mayor, my motion was to deny any chickens in the City of West Bend. And that's it. Period.
Thank you. Mike?
I have done some personal research on this as well. I know there is folks in the audience who might have some other things to say about this. Doing some contacting of other communities our size or larger who do allow this sort of activity, they have zero to very few issues in their community. The percentage of citizens that actually do take out licenses to raise chickens in their yards are very small. I would point out the fact that we allow a number of other pets in our community, which I'm sure the police force can attest to, that they get many more complaints about, specifically dogs. I would say if you're opposed to having chickens in the City of West Bend, I would suggest that you probably are more opposed to having dogs in the City of West Bend. And if that's not the case, then I think we should reconsider where we are. The amount of complaints that we get on dogs is a huge amount. They're more of a nuisance than I think other communities have proven chickens will ever be. I'm in favor of amending the proposed ordinance.
There is a motion on the floor.
Ian, what's the protocol? We, when we're done with comments? And Roger, I respectfully ask you to be respectful. We're a group that works really well together.
Yes.
We've tackled a lot of tough topics. Chickens doesn't need to be a topic that I think creates an enemy. So we're having an open discussion. I'd ask you to respect the rest of your peers and do that.
Thank you.
What's the proper protocol? Do we, can you amend, or do we take action on the motion that's been made, and then depending if it passes or fails, we make another motion?
So there is a motion and a second to essentially, to, well, to reject the ordinance. If that fails to change the majority of the votes, you'd take another second motion to consider. I would assume then to consider the ordinance. We can amend the ordinance as part of that motion. If there's minor changes, such as the license fee would be a flat fee of $50, I don't see any reason to just, not to just amend the, orally amend the ordinance and approve it based on that, because that's a simple amendment. If there's more drastic changes to the ordinance, we'd make those changes and bring it back for consideration at the next meeting for approval.
But do we do those amendments right now, or after we take action on, as Roger's motion was to?
I think, I think they're pertinent to the discussion of whether the ordinance gets rejected or not, because that's part of-
So we should make an amendment. Mike's amendment would happen now.
Yes, because, because I think that probably plays into which way certain people vote.
Okay.
So I think getting the, getting the proposed ordinance into a final format that's agreed on by the people proposing it will lend, or will influence whether people are going to vote for or against the ordinance.
Even though his motion is to cancel it, or to eliminate it, that if then that motion, if the amended version fails-
Yes. Well, I mean, we can, we can, we can vote on Roger's motion.
Okay.
And then if it passes, then I guess there's no discussion to be had. If it fails, then we can amend the motion and take a motion to approve the amended ordinance from that point. Does that make sense?
It does. I just want to make sure the council follows that and agrees with the process.
And there's, there's two ways to handle it, but I think, given, given the circumstances, maybe it's best to vote on the pending motion, and then amend the ordinance.
It fails.
If, assuming it fails, amend the pending, or the, the ordinance for consideration, and have a motion, look for a motion to approve the amended ordinance.
If there's a tie, the motion, or the, yeah, the motion fails.
Yeah, because it's not a motion to approve at that point. You would break a tie on a motion to approve.
Got it.
But, I mean-
Everybody get it?
Does that make sense?
Are we done with comments then, or what?
No.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
What do you got?
Oh, um, I was one of the ones that voted against it last time. I will be voting against it this time. Last time we did this, I had one person, two people, I'm sorry, told me they thought this was a good idea. I had quite a few people tell me, no, it was not a good idea. And after, it never got voted on, because there was a consensus not to, I had a ton of people telling me, thank you for not doing this. Now, you know, Mike, what you said, yeah, we have a lot more problems with dogs. You're right. Every other house has got a dog. If every other house had a chicken, you'd have the same problem. I'm not saying we're going to, obviously, but I think you're comparing apples to oranges. He was in that scenario. I looked at a couple of ordinances around, and one of the ones, or the ones I looked at compared to ours, ours is one of the most lenient ones out there, which I have some disagreement with. You know, I looked at Milwaukee's, and Milwaukee's has a very interesting clause, and this is, should I put this in now, or wait a little later?
No, let's go for it. I'd like to hear it.
Okay. I'll read it to you. It says, "Before permit is issued, the DNS," and the DNS is the neighborhood, Department of Neighborhood Services, "will notify all of the property owners where chickens shall be kept and owners, not residents, off all directly and diagonally abutting properties, including those across in an alley. Neighbors will be given an opportunity to voice any concerns they may have, and then if they need do, they have a hearing on it." You know, I live in the City of West Bend. I like where I live. I don't want chickens in my yard. I don't want chickens in the three houses around me. You know, everybody's, how can you say this without offending anybody? Everybody says it's their rights to have chickens. I understand that. But it's also my rights not to have to listen, look, and smell your chickens. You know, I have had, like I said, a ton of people telling me, this is not what we need, and I just, I don't think we should. I know a lot of groups are doing it. I understand that. If it's the will of the council, so be it. But that's what I'm saying.
Thanks, Steve.
Can I just ask, Steve, if we added an amendment like you said, would that change your mind?
It might, but probably, I don't, I don't know. I would prob, I'll honestly, I'll probably say, still say no. But if it got to the point that it did pass, the council passed it, then I would request something like that be put in.
Got it. Thanks.
John?
Yeah, I'd just like to echo the same thing with Steve. I feel the same way. If I had neighbors that would put a chicken coop in their backyard, I certainly, as a neighbor, would not be very happy. And I also contacted a few communities. I just talked to New Berlin, the young lady that I talked to, she's only been there a year, so I couldn't get a real- year, so I couldn't get a real good handle on it. She says, well, at this point, I don't think we have a problem, but Milwaukee, I also checked and Milwaukee does, their idea of the neighborhood doesn't want it, then there would be a meeting and it would be a discussion on whether you can have your chickens. Also, you know, I think what we're going to do is we're going to start to create problems down the road, just like Mike says, that dogs are a problem once in a while, but chickens, we're going to draw coyotes, we're going to draw fox. We've got stray cats. I know I've got stray cats up in my neighborhood that are just wandering around. They're going to draw to the chicken areas as well, so. And to monitor it, I don't know if the city has enough staff to, to monitor to make sure that the odor isn't there and making sure that the coops are kept clean. So, unless the amendments are going to be different, then I have to vote no right now.
Thanks, John. Mike, did you have something else?
Sure, I, I would guess I would like to just continue the conversation. You know, it's, to me, it's, it's another pet that doesn't pose any threat to anybody in a, in a, in a physical manner. Again, this isn't something that we are leading the charge on as a community. This is something that has been done and proven in a number of different communities in the state of Wisconsin and the nation, that there, there doesn't seem to be any real negative actions regarding this situation. It seems very simple and, and easy to me. It's, I, I think some of us are looking at potential problems that just really don't exist anywhere, and it's been proven by the communities that do allow this. So, I understand some of the concerns that we've been hearing, but it's, it's just, it's not a, a fact. I have a hard time suggesting that a chicken as a pet is, is going to be any worse off than some of the pets we already allow.
Thanks, Mike. Justice?
And I just, and just to add to what you were saying, Steve, or to contradict, I guess, I'm, as a busy hairdresser, I see like 15 to 20 people a day, and of course, I'm talking to people about this kind of stuff all day long, and I haven't had a single person honestly say that they wouldn't like to see chickens in West Bend. So, and that's part of the reason that I, because I've been testing it, because I don't, you know, I don't want to bring something up that people are going to be massively opposed to, and I just haven't heard it. I just haven't heard it, so.
Rich?
So, while I seconded the, the motion to deny, when the vote does come up, I will vote to not deny, so that we can at least bring it up for the conversation and have the amendments brought to the, to the ordinance. And we can finish that conversation to see if that changes anybody's minds. I mean, at this point, there really is nothing that we can do to, but that'll at least open up the conversation still. If so, if we call for a vote on denial.
Makes sense. Anyone in the public that's wishing to speak to the item, I'll hold off just until this process goes through, and when we start talking about amendments, you're welcome to come on up. So, if there's no further, give us about a minute and then, then you'll be all set. So, if there's no other comments or questions from the council, we'll take up action on the motion that's on the floor, which is to deny the ordinance. There's a motion and a second. All those, all those in favor of denying the ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed to denying the ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Would you mind taking a roll call? It sounded pretty, someone speaking louder.
Alderman Butchlick?
No. Yes, I mean, yes.
Okay. It would be to deny the ordinance is the motion. Alderman Christian?
No.
Alderman Javali?
No.
Alderman Jenkins?
No.
Alderman Caston?
No.
Alderman Hoogster?
Yes.
Alderman Model?
No.
Alderman Kissed?
Yes.
Motion fails. Five, three.
Then I'm thinking, as long as we're not going to have the parliamentary procedure police come and arrest anybody, I think it maybe makes sense to hear from the public before we consider amendments and see what the public has to think about, if it makes sense to the group. So, if you'd like, come up to the mic, let us know your name and your address in West Bend, and we'd be happy to hear what you have to say about chickens. Sir?
Jim Toos, 5396 West Lake Drive, West Bend. Hey, if anybody has questions for me, I'm more than happy to help, because I've raised chickens for a long time. I've lived in Whitefish Bay, chickens allowed. Milwaukee, chickens allowed. To, to your New Berlin point, I've got friends who raise chickens in New Berlin and show chickens in a residence, and they have not had any issues. So, the, I'm not here to argue, I'm just here to more give information that maybe people would want, the yeses or the noes. The smell, well, first of all, the noise, I'm not sure what noise anybody would ever hear. When a hen lays an egg, there's a little bit of noise, and it's kind of cute. If you have a rooster, that's a problem, but I know that in your documents, you're not allowing roosters, which is smart. Do not have a rooster. The smell, I've had up to eight chickens in a coop, in a run, they call it. Very little smell. My dogs, I have a lab and a little stavy, they smell more as far as what they defecate. So, the point to the dogs is very valid. The dogs are issues, of course, sometimes with neighbors, but the smell, if the neighbor doesn't pick up after the dog, it's an issue, and we all know that. We've all stepped in it, I'm sure. So, I'm not sure what the issue really would be. You may want to have in your document, you're talking about chickens going into your neighbor's yards, definitely a concern, because chickens are going to roam if you allow them to. You could put something in the, in your documents of saying they must be contained to what's called a run, which is attached to their coop, if you guys want me to explain what that is. Then the chickens won't go. They don't need to roam. If you're in the country, let them roam. So, I'm just saying, as a West Bend resident, I think it's a great idea to have this for kids, for families, for food, organic, all that stuff that everybody's turning to right now. I just think it's a great idea. It really is. And I would love to answer any questions that you guys may have. I'm not a farmer. I'm a normal resident guy, but I can answer any questions that you may or may not have.
One, then, since you know so much-
I know pretty much.
A run versus a coop. Right now, we're calling it a chicken coop.
Yep.
Are we opening ourselves up for a can of worms by calling it a coop, not a run? Is it equal, the same thing?
So, a coop is where the, the chickens will, will live or roost at night. They always roost at night. And a run could be like a fenced-in area that's connected to the coop. So, like I had a, a coop, and then they would get down and I'd be in a fenced-in area. And so, the chickens never left an area. You can make that as big as you want. You can make it, I think I had 20 by 10 or something. So, a coop is in a run. Does that make sense?
It does.
You don't even have to have a run, though. You don't have to, you should, but you don't have to. And the point, too, by the way, I, I'm getting off track here, but somebody had mentioned about coyotes and I'm not sure what else, but we all know that there's coyotes in every single county of Wisconsin, right? I mean, you're not going to attract more coyotes, because you have these chickens in a coop. As long as the coop is built right and the hen is, you're not going to have any issues. The only thing I've ever lost a chicken to is a hawk, and you're not going to control that, so.
I would note that the ordinance, as written, says they shall be kept in a waterproof, rodent-proof, and predator-proof enclosure in a fenced-in area, so it addresses both the coop and the run.
And the enclosure area is all part of the setback? So, it's not just the coop if someone wanted to get down to the, the house is part of the entire structure?
I will, I will clarify that in the ordinance.
Perfect. Any other questions for Mr. Toos?
In your experience with some of these other communities, was there, when they first started these ordinances to allow chickens, did they have trial periods or short timeframes that they initiated this sort of item? Or did they just say, it, it is what it is, we're implementing this new ordinance to allow it without putting any time constraints on it?
Not that I know of those. The rules and regulations for having chickens in those communities are already in place, so I can't answer to that.
Okay. So, that, one of, one of our, one of the proposed ideas for amendment was to do this on a trial basis for possibly a year or two years and then revisit it at that point? I'm just looking for any, any feedback that you might have on that for a first-time community or a community that's potentially going to implement this.
I personally think you're setting yourself up for failure on that. Picture taking a dog away from a kid. You can't do it. So, a family of three or four with two or three kids who love these chickens, honestly, you guys, chickens have personalities. There's no way you're taking these chickens away from some kids. I think you're setting yourself up for failure. I don't think it's going to fail, in the sense that if you implement this, and we're going to try the chicken thing for, for a year, I really don't think you're going to have any problems. I haven't seen it anywhere, much less here. I understand people are scared of the noise or the smell. Maybe you put in there that there can be, I don't know, make sure that you don't smell your neighbor up, but I mean, you've got the, you've got, you've got the rule in there of asking your neighbors. And anytime I've ever done this, I've asked neighbors, and they're like, hey, great, can I have eggs? That's all they care about. They don't care about the smell. They've never had an issue. So, I just think that's a neat idea, but I don't think it's going to work. If you, Mike, want to go to somebody's house and say, hey, we got to play your chickens after a year, that's going to be a tough conversation.
And that's why I brought it up, because it's-
Yeah.
-a thought that has been floating around, and I'm, I'm not convinced that that's a good idea either, if we were to amend the ordinance to suggest that. Also, I guess I'd like to question the idea of the waterproof enclosure. As far as I could tell, a, a run wouldn't necessarily be waterproofed in any sort of way, so I don't know what the waterproofing is.
The coop, though.
The enclosure would be.
The coop would be waterproof. The run would not need to be. That's how I see that.
Yeah, there are questions for this gentleman, otherwise we'll see who else from the public. Chris? Chris, sorry.
Sorry, I had a question.
Nice sweater, by the way.
Thank you. Maybe not necessarily for him, so I apologize if it's a little off-topic, but in section C.5 here, when we're talking about accessory structures under chapter 17, so does that fall under building permits and all the fees and inspection and all that that would fall under other accessory structures or no?
Mark?
I'm done. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's actually defined in the code that it is defined as an accessory structure under a zoning code, so they would have the same limitations that they have. If you've got, if you already have accessory structures and you're exceeding the square footage, you would not get a coop on this. You would have the same. We have specific setbacks in here that are slightly different than others, other districts within it, but yes, we would treat it as an accessory structure requiring a permit.
Okay. Just want to make sure we have somebody inspecting these to make sure that it's up to-
Our inspectors would, would have to do that. They would have the same requirements to provide a platte survey to show that it's being located five feet off the property lines. Also, because of the separation distance, the way this is written, the coop and the run, or the yard that's fenced, would be considered the enclosure, and the enclosure would have the 25-foot setback from other prop, other buildings within, adjacent to it. So, there are, to be perfectly honest, very few yards where this is going to fit in West Bend's 40-to-60-foot lots.
Got it. Thank you.
And the, I, I will say, as to other jurisdictions, we did do that research last time. Most of them have separation distances of 50 feet or greater. Most of them have lot size requirements. New Berlin's does. When you're talking about New Berlin, you're talking about minimum lot sizes of around half acre or greater. We don't have that many of those lots here in West Bend. So, this is a different animal than other jurisdictions. Comparing one to another and their problems to another isn't necessarily comparing apples and, to apples on it. Not opposed to it. It, it is some work. I don't think there's going to be all that big a rush for it, but at the same time, we do have some. I would ask that you give staff the ability to look at this ordinance a little better, because there are some inconsistencies between this and other portions of the code. For example, right now, we don't allow chicken fencing, chicken wire as a fence material in the city. All right? I don't have a problem requiring, allowing chicken wire for a chicken run, but I don't want it as fencing material, you know, allowed throughout the residential area of the city. The council made that choice years ago, and we've been enforcing it consistently since. So, the fence that this would be, wouldn't be allowed. It would be five feet off the property line instead of on your property or within six inches of the property line, as a residential fence is allowed. So, there are some inconsistencies that we would need to address to make sure that this is enforceable. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Any else from the public? Like to comment? Good evening.
Hello, how are you guys doing? Joe Zarembe, I live at 172 Post Street. Mr. Hoogster, I believe you're my councilman. So, I was here last year. A lot of what we've talked about has already been talked about, but one of the things I thought I'd add is that I can't stress enough how I think that getting the neighbor's approval is probably just that the one little hump that we would get everybody over. If your neighbors say no, you don't get them. If you don't fit the right rules for your zoning, you don't get them. And what's really interesting is I called Milwaukee and I called both the same group that one of you guys mentioned, the, I can't think of the name of it, but they have 600,000 people in Milwaukee and they have about 150 families with chickens. That's about a .0002 of the population. TOSA has got 48,000 people. They've got four or five families with chickens and zero complaints or tickets. That's .0001% of the population. Cedarburg, just, they're pretty more, more recent, 11.5, 11,500 people, handful of families. There was four calls the first month. Guess what they were for? Roosters. No more rooster calls. There's nonsense. And the police, and, and I was literally calling the police, because I don't want to give you guys a bunch of work. I, it's not what I'm interested in. My point is that it really does not seem like it's going to be that big of an issue. There's just going to be a handful of people that want to do this and, or are eligible to do it, and let's give it a try. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else itching to get on TV? Yes, sir. Good evening.
Todd Tuttle, 504 North 8th Avenue. I live up, up the hill just from Tucan's Custard there, big tract of wooded land through Regner all the way up through Glacial Blue Hills. On any given day, I have turkey, geese, duck, the occasional ring-necked pheasant, great horned owls, raccoons as big as bear cubs. You know, I don't think the wildlife thing is, you know, attracting predators or any, anything of that nature is, is much of an issue. Things are pretty wild. I'm two blocks from downtown, and it's, it's that wild there. And so, I'm, I'm for having chickens, and thanks for entertaining the notion.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, and lead me through the parliamentary procedure police. Can we be amending this before we actually have a motion? Or should we amend it so we can get a motion on what the amendment would be?
So, I would also, well, I would also second, or suggest, based on what Mark said, that maybe the answer is bring the amended ordinance back for consideration with the other couple of, or the other consistencies addressed in it, so that, I mean, just like, just like we have section one, which modifies the keeping of animals in the, the city, that we also incorporate the couple of zoning changes we may have to make or, or other references we have to ma, make at the same time. So, we bring it as an inclusive motion, or inclusive ordinance to actually vote on passage of the ordinance next, next meeting.
Sure. We could prove it contingent upon staff comments, so we can-
Correct.
...lay out what bullet points we think might want to be modified or might not want to be modified. Approve it contingent upon staff comments.
Yep. And since it's non-unanimous, it's going to come back for a second reading regardless.
Sure.
So, I, we can do either way, where we make the amendments and vote on the initial ordinance today, and then bring back any other modifications as a separate ordinance, or either way. I will note that, based on comments, the changes I've already incorporated in Section C5, I made it clear that enclosures inclusive of the fenced-in area, in both references to enclosures there, shall be considered as accessory structures, so that it's clear that the accessory structure is the coop and whatever fenced-in run you have directly around it. And then I changed the license fee to, just based on the suggested amount, license fee for chickens shall be $50 per residence per year. So, I made that a flat fee, that $50 obviously is not set in stone, but I changed that to a flat fee per residence as well.
Hi, Mike?
Ian, is it, is it appropriate to table this at this point, and then bring it back up once the items are reconsidered? Bring it up for a potential motion and a vote, based on whatever language is appropriate or decided upon amongst the, the different departments that we may consider consulting? And then, just, do we keep voting on it until, I mean, assuming that we have a percentage of council members that are in favor of this, does it pay to keep voting on it every time we make a change, or is it...
I was going to say, I think if we can identify some of the big changes, give staff some direction, and they can give input on things that we may not know about, like how it affects the zoning code. For example, one thing I heard come up a couple of times is the type of notification to the neighbors. I would, personally, I don't know that I would support asking neighbors for permission, I think we may be causing some neighborhood grief, where there may not be any, however, a notification to the neighbors that this does meet whatever future code there would be, I think would be appropriate. If we made folks go out and ask every neighbor if they wanted a dog or a cat, or if they would approve a dog or a cat, I think we'd be creating more enemies in our neighborhoods than, than the chicken thing is probably worth. So, for example, can staff check out some language as to what it would take to send out a notification to adjoining properties? I think that may be appropriate. So, I get, maybe just identifying any hot-button items, Mike, and then tabling this and not having an actual vote tonight seems appropriate to me, too. I was kind of stumbling around with how we would approach this anyway, but if there's any hot-button items that we would ask staff to take a look at. John?
Yep, I think, I agree with Mike, I think we should table this, give an opportunity for the public out there right now, because this chicken came up pretty quick without really any notification out there with the public. I think we should give the public an opportunity to be able to show up at the next meeting, if they're for it or against it. That would definitely help me also, and might change my mind, maybe there are more people out there in favor of it than I think there are. So, I'll make a motion to table that for the next meeting, with the changes, as you mentioned, by the staff.
I don't even know, we can just table it, can't we?
Yeah, we can just table it.
Staff's one list, right. Does any other, again, hot-button items that we're not aware of that could affect some other part of the code, let's bring it up, but if we'd like it tabled, we can, and Roger?
I had a motion to deny it, and I'm not sure whether we even voted on that, it was seconded, but...
We voted on it, yes.
And what was the vote?
Five to three.
Five to three to deny your motion.
Then, why are we still hashing it over? It was denied.
Because your motion was denied, not the, not the topic.
My motion was denied?
Yes.
Good grief.
Rich?
So, okay, tabling it, I just want to caution us, we keep saying that dogs and cats, and those are domesticated animals that are pets. These are wild animals that are basically farm-type, so they're not the same, it's not a one-to-one, it is an apples-to-oranges thing, so we have to be cautious about comparing it and saying, "Well, we don't ask everybody about dogs." Well, you know, we've domesticated those, and that's basically been accepted by society, so.
Mike?
Rich?
Yes.
When's the last time you saw a wild chicken?
About a month and a half ago, running through the fields.
I'm, I'm just making a suggestion, chickens are very much pets, like they are very similar to dogs and cats in, in a lot of the world, so I, I don't know, I have, it's been a long time since I've seen a wild chicken.
Okay. At risk of wrecking our holiday council meeting, we'll table this and take up the discussion, staff, thanks for digging into, we want to make sure we're doing this correctly. And with that, I'm going to gleefully go on to item number eight, unless anyone objects to that. Thanks for the discussion, thanks for the comments from the public, we appreciate it. Item number eight, and I would anticipate, we, sorry, we bring this back at the first meeting in January, is that enough time for you folks to, okay, super, thanks. Item number eight, 2019-2021 Collective Bargaining Agreement between the City of West Bend and the local 2025 International Association of Firefighters Labor Agreement Contract.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any questions or comments? Are we done? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Do have a bit of editorializing regarding the labor agreement with the firefighters, and it's all positive. In 2021, the city had in excess of $17 million in unfunded liabilities, almost exclusively in post-retirement health benefits. As of right now, that number has shrunk to about $13 million, almost exclusively due to changes in the post-retirement health benefits that the city and the firefighters agreed to back in 2012, I think it was. Ten years of health insurance was reduced to five years. This year, it, we negotiated, and I think happily shook hands at the end of those negotiations, and reduced that post-retirement health benefit as it used to stand in an unfunded manner to zero, zero years. So, new hires, this did not touch existing employees at all, new hires live by a different set of, of rules. And it's one of those things I think will fly deeply under the radar, most folks won't really know about it, but over time, and by, when I say over time, it's going to be the next 25 to 30 years, that unfunded liability will shrink to zero, as far as the firefighters' portion is concerned. We're still in negotiations with the folks over on the police side, so we can talk about that hopefully in the next month or so. But I'd like to thank the firefighters' union, they recognized that as an organization, they have a responsibility not only to their current employees, current teammates, but also to the future folks. They fully recognize that we need to be an attractive community for high-quality firefighters to want to come and work and spend their careers, and invest their careers. These changes wouldn't have happened without their support, and like any negotiation, it didn't necessarily come easy, we worked really hard at it, those four meetings that Michelle mentioned were good and lively, and I think each side was representing the folks that they were supposed to, and ultimately, I think we both recognized that, from a financial perspective, related directly to unfunded liabilities, that we'll be leaving West Bend in a better position than we found it. So, thank you to the firefighter folks, I thought it was a positive discussion, a positive outcome, and I thank them and staff for that. Any questions? Mike?
I would also, I understand, I was not part of these negotiations, but I understand it's a very difficult and intense conversation, so I want to just say thank you to our staff and the, and the professional firefighters as well, for coming to a fine agreement, and working through all of the, all of the difficulties of coming to, to finalizing a contract like this. I think it's really difficult work, and I commend everybody involved with it.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, moving on to item number nine, under reports, a report by Alderman Jenkins regarding the library board meeting. Chris?
All right, it's pretty short. We got confirmation that our new West Bend library website is live, you guys can check it out. The best part is that there's no longer a little dash in the westbendlibrary.org website name, you just have to type "West Bend Library," you'll pop it up. I'm looking at it right now, it's very user-friendly, does a, does a great job at sharing all the wonderful assets that we have in the library, so I'm super excited that we got all that running. And then, we finished up our library director's review that we're presenting to her tomorrow. That's it.
Thanks, Chris. Any questions for Chris in the library? Item number 10, report by Alderman Christian regarding the downtown bid board meeting. Mike?
Good evening, we met December 4th. Just a few items to highlight, one of them was wayfinding signage that we're working on in the downtown area. Doug Newman had made a presentation on some options for parking signage downtown that would help direct visitors and residents and employees to public parking spaces. Parking's always been an issue kind of in the downtown area and a, and a hot-button topic, so the addition of parking signs and wayfinding signs in the downtown area is hopefully going to help eliminate some of the confusion for areas that are accessible for parking and easily found with some additional signage. So, we approved up to $1,500 for this project, and we'll be working towards that here in the near future. There are some wires on downtown buildings that hold seasonal decorations. There's been some concern from the Public Works Department and the city regarding these wires and the amount of weight that they can hold, so there's been kind of some work, again, by Doug. He's exploring options for better ways to inspect the way that these wires are connected to the buildings, and the wires themselves, to make sure that they maintain integrity and are suitable for hanging decorations. We also received a nice proposal in the presentation by the Downtown Association and the Diva Group. They requested $12,900 for marketing of the downtown West Bend area. This amount was approved by the bid board, and they'll be continuing to work on some items that will help develop programs and, and marketing of the downtown area events. So, we are happy to work with them and continue a positive move forward with their organizations.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions for Mike? Before you turn off your mic, Mike. Item 11, report regarding the Community TV Committee meeting.
Oh, we did that, too. That was just last week. We have a new part-time social media employee, and with the, the rise of the social media aspect of the community TV, it's very important that we keep on top of this sort of thing. This person is instrumental in conducting our social media efforts, and they'll also be in charge of kind of creating some goals and standards for what we should be looking for by conducting social media efforts, so excited about that. Our, our Facebook likes and impressions and everything has been getting really positive feedback, and it's really allowing the folks from Community TV to, you know, kind of, kind of market the city of West Bend in a real positive light. Business of the Month is a really, real positive aspect of the social media, and it's, with that sort of thing, we've also been talking about renaming or rebranding West Bend Community Television. Community TV is, is kind of looked upon as a very, it's cable-access television, but that, this group is doing a lot more than that these days, so we're considering a potential name change, and we think that might help in marketing and branding of the city in general, by having a different name associated with Community TV. Also, they are working very hard on revamping the entire city's website. If anybody's been on the city website, there are definitely some portions of it that are not easy to navigate, or do not operate properly, so revamping the, the website is going to be very important moving forward to help citizens easily be able to communicate with City Hall and vice versa, so we're really excited about that. I know they've been working with every department across the board to revamp the website, so look for those changes to come in the, within the next year, for sure.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions for Mike? Steve, report by Alderman Hoogster regarding Park and Rec Commission.
I was unable to attend the meeting.
I bet it was awesome.
I rather would have been at the meeting.
Good, then there being no further business before the common council adjourn, are there any announcements tonight? I'll just say, I hope the citizens of West Bend have a safe and happy and merry Christmas, happy holidays, and fruitful new year. We'll see you in January. Have a good night. Roger?
Everyone is invited to the Tappan Tavern for a little snack of Christmas, Christmas presents of sorts.
Hear that, West Bend? Come on down. Good night, everyone.